The hour of seven o'clock having arrived, I'll call the council to order. As the role reflected, all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Bolsonic, a quorum has been established. The approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, March 16th, 2015, council, you have those minutes before you. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes of that meeting? Seeing none, they stand approved. Next, we have council items to be considered. I'm going to make a request, council, that number, under Public Works, item number four, Riverfront Renaissance Phase Three Final Design, be moved to the, staff's made a request to move that to the April 20th meeting. So that will be under consideration at the April 20th meeting, so remove that item from the agenda. We have next a proclamation before the City Council tonight, recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I would like to have our council read the proclamation. And I will start with Councilmember Vaughn. Now, Councilmember-
Do we all have copies of that? Is that, are they on one as well?
Should be, yep. I have an extra paper if you need it.
I have it.
Okay, thank you.
Just a slow read.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Vaughn, thank you.
Whereas sexual assault is violence using sexual actions and words that are unwanted by and/or harmful to another person and is one of the most persuasive and serious public health issues in the United States and-
Whereas the Centers for Disease Control reports that one in six women and one in 33 men experience some type of attempted or completed rape in their lives nationally and-
Whereas data indicates that almost two-thirds of all rapes are committed by someone who is known to the victim, and the Minnesota Department of Health estimates the economic impact of rape and other forms of sexual violence is more than $8 billion and-
Whereas sexual violence can have harmful and lasting consequences for victims, families, and communities, and the City of Hastings is committed to investigating and bringing to justice those who have violated others and-
Whereas the Hastings Police Department is collaborating with the Minnesota Coalition against sexual assault in developing a best practices response to sexual abuse reports and-
Go ahead, read one more for us.
Whereas the City of Hastings will continue to work with our community partners to provide services to those who have been victimized.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Hastings City Council that the month of April 2015 is proclaimed as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in honor of those who are victims and survivors of sexual violence and those who work to make prevention a priority. Thank you, council, it's an important public health issue and appreciate that fact that we recognize it tonight. Next, council, we have before us is the consent agenda. What's your wish? Councilmember Nelson makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Councilmember Alangi. That motion is now before the body. Is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we'll go to awarding of contracts of public hearing. Our first public hearing tonight is to amend City Code, Chapter 152, their storm water management plan. Mr. Craven, John, glad to have you here. Welcome to the meeting, and can you introduce this item for us?
Thank you, Mayor and council. The Federal Clean Water Act requires us to submit a permit annually to the MPCA for the ability to discharge storm water into nearby bodies of water. The first permit, as you recall, was submitted back in 2008, which covered the 2007 permit The MPCA typically updates the permit every five years, which the last revision was back in 2013. As part of the stipulation for that approval, cities had until the year 2015, the spring of 2015, to update all the conditions within that permit. One of the conditions of that permit, or mandate from that permit, is that we need to update our storm water management ordinance. Looking at the permit, there's kind of five areas that we would need to revise our current storm water permit ordinance. The first is in the area of what would classify, the classification of the rate volume and water control standards to meet for the project disturbing one acre as opposed to increasing the impervious surface by one acre. The second is the rain intensity curves. Rain intensity curves are used to design ponds, design storm sewer, and the rain intensity curves have changed to a new Atlas 14, so this needs to be implemented into the new ordinance. Third is water quality standards. Basically, an owner of a property that would wish to develop would need to make sure that the water quality standards do not degrade, so therefore any total suspended solids or total phosphorus would not increase, so they would need to submit in some calculations that would dictate and prove that. And then if they couldn't, there'd be mitigation requirements that they could fulfill that would allow them an opportunity to do a one-for-one on another piece of property closest to the site. Four would be a long-term maintenance agreement. Any BMP that would be added to meet the rate volume and water control standard would be necessary to have a development agreement made between the parties that the city would be able to maintain the BMP should the owner not fulfill the maintenance agreement. And the fifth is just the reorganization and minor formatting of the ordinance, just to make it more legible and reader-friendly.
Okay. Thank you, John, appreciate you bringing forth this issue and your explanation. I'm going to now open up the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone here who would like to make comment in regards to the storm water management plan? This is in regards to storm water management. Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing on that, council. Let's address that issue. What's your wish? Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you, Your Honor. John, on number two, the long-term maintenance of the best management practices, so you have a legal document to determine parties responsible on the best management practices and the long-term maintenance, can you explain exactly how that's going to work? I mean, are you going to have, I mean, we've got ponds all over the city, I mean, is it going to be homeowners associations or who do you consider to be responsible parties? And how, sort of, how does that process work?
Yep, that's a good question. Typically, if a new development came in, there'd be easements to get to the pond itself. Typically, a homeowners association would be responsible for maintaining it. It's understood that they would maintain that infiltration basin or pond. If for whatever reason they wouldn't, the city would contact them to try to get it done. If those efforts fail, then the city would move forward with means to provide the maintenance and assess the property owners for that. This would be kind of a last resort as opposed to the first step. It is the, again, the responsibility of the property owner to fulfill the maintenance aspect of it.
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you. John, I think in the past, we've run into some issues, and this was when the new, the wall in addition was newer than it is now, I know that's a relative term, but there would be noxious weeds, there'd be other issues that were surrounding some of the ponds, and a lot of times the homeowners didn't realize that, that they were ultimately responsible as a whole for what was happening with a lot of those ponds. Do you have any idea, or would the city be talking to homeowners associations, the developers, about being proactive so that the homeowners understand that when they're living in this development and they're paying that homeowner association fee, that ultimately this is the response, their responsibility for that, that long-term maintenance?
Yeah, the first would be part of the development agreement, so it would be, the developer would have that knowledge, and the hope would be passed along. The second, there would be still an educational component of this permit, so we could try to get the message out to homeowners in general of what requirements are for maintenance of ponds and the broader spectrum of the storm water permit.
Okay, thank you. Your Honor, I have one more question.
Councilmember Schultz?
There are a couple ponds in my neighborhood that are considered private. They're there for more aesthetics. Councilmember Vaughn knows which one I'm talking about, and not necessarily for runoff. Do you, does the city consider those to be part of this big storm water protection maintenance, and do you do any of the monitoring of those ponds to make sure that what the water quality is in any of them, or is that something that's, that we just leave alone because they're not, because they're private ponds?
This, the new ordinance would take into account the new ponds, the past ponds. There isn't any agreement that would require us to maintain those. It's still the wish of the state to have those maintained by whomever owns it, but the new ordinance strictly is the, from this point forward, any new pond that would be built would, would require that, so.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion? We need a motion. Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Brock's. That motion is now before the body. Further discussion? Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have a public hearing in regards to the assessments for the 2015 Street Improvement Program. Many may recall that about, what, a month and a half ago, in March, early March, late February, we had the meeting about the 2015 Improvement Project and discussed the, what was going to happen with the project, and the council adopted. Tonight's purpose of the public hearing is the assessments to that project, and so tonight we'll be talking about the money end of the 2015 Improvement Project that has been ordered. Nick, I'll turn it over to you for the introduction.
Thanks, Mayor Hicks. Good evening, council members. As the mayor said, tonight, y'all have a resolution before you considering the assessments for the 2015 Infrastructure Improvement Program and specifically the 2015 Street Improvements Project. Just to recap on what part of town we're talking about here, we've got primarily Balls Drive will see the most activity on it, that entire stretch between South Frontage Road and the school complex, along with a couple of pieces of South Frontage Road between Westview Drive and the east intersection there with River Street at Highway 55. It's about half a mile, six tenths of a mile of street that we're talking about here. So just to recap on that, our project cost and funding mixture has changed a little bit now that we do have bids in hand, and I'll get on to that after this item here, but what we're looking at is a total project expense of about $613,000, and as you can see with the pie chart there, the various components of funding that we have within this, to bring it all together, about 82% of it is from public dollars, whether that's city bonded debt, MinDOT state aid money, or city utility funds. This is just another way of looking at that, if you were to slice up a dollar. The assessment rates on this were computed per the city ordinance policy, and that for a collector road type of situation like we have here is to base those rates on the estimated construction cost of the road component of the improvements. We did this back at about, in January, and arrived at a rate of $26.93 per frontage foot for standard types of properties, and we also did a takeoff based on that frontage foot rate for high-density units, townhomes, condos, apartments. We had quite a variety of, a variance in, in the distance that any particular property had for frontage when it came to those high-density properties. They were all over in range, and so there wasn't really anything consistent there, so what we did is a, an aggregate amount of the frontage and then debited up by the number of units that abutted all of that frontage, and we arrived at 123.60 for the rate per unit on those. Again, collector road policy I've got there, just wanted to point out that these rates are falling closely in line with what we've seen in recent years with the type of project that we're proposing or that we've adopted here with essentially a major pavement overhaul and, and not a lot in the way of other big reconstruction on the street. Going forward, should the assessments be adopted tonight, we have a little bit of a waiting period until the city is ready to accept the payments for assessments, so folks can go through the summer here without having to worry about that. We give up till the beginning of October to start that process, and if folks want to make a payment in full, they can do that by the end of November. Thereafter, we do have to certify any assessments that are still remaining to the county tax rolls, where then they appear on the following spring property tax statement, and are put on a 10-year repayment program. That does come with an interest rate when folks choose to do that. Our range has been between 3% and 5% since I've been here, and the last several years we've been in the mid-3s, so that's holding fairly steady. We get our rates in the middle of summer roughly, when the city goes out to sell the bonds for the project, so we won't know an exact rate for a few months yet, but I would expect it to come in within that range. Just walking through an example of an assessment computation, again, building off the situation where we'd have a standard property, $26.93 a frontage foot on 100 feet, $2,693. For example, doing that on a property tax repayment plan comes out to an annual installment at the first year of about $363 there, and it does decrease over time, of course, as folks pay back on the principal and, and reduce the amount that the interest can be charged to. On a monthly standpoint, that'd be about 30 bucks. I do want to, again, highlight that we do have a program for financial aid when it comes to assessments. It's called assessment abatement. That's funded by our Community Development Block Grant Program that Dakota County CDA operates. We will mail out applications on that the middle of summer, give folks a month and a half, two months to fill out the applications and turn those in, and then the CDA does a process of reviewing that. There's a variety of things that people have to submit to, to go through a qualification process to validate that they meet the requirements to, to be given abatement on that. So in the event that someone qualifies for full abatement, their entire, entire assessment does get paid off. Partial abatement is usually determined by the amount of funding we have left in that program, and then evenly split amongst the remaining qualifying property owners. So that's what I have. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Hicks, for the public hearing and the rest.
Okay, thank you, Nick, for doing that. Next, I'll call, the public hearing is open. Anyone here who wish to speak to the assessments for the 2015 Street Improvement Project that Nick just described? Please, welcome to the meeting. Is this your letter? I got it. I just got it today. Oh, okay, okay.
Thank you, Mayor Hicks and the council. I'm Jesteren Geier, 1101 Park Lane.
Welcome, welcome to the meeting.
I'm not expecting everybody to read that email. I assume you all have already read it. I sent that out last Thursday. Regarding the trail improvement, I'm not going to go into any great detail. I understand we, we did that on February 17th. The biggest reason for this email was misunderstanding of how the trail is going to be developed through the park. The trail is proposed to be built on top of an existing berm, which is only approximately three foot wide right now, so it would require bringing in approximately 200 to 220 cubic yards of fill, and obviously grading and compacting into place, which is quite a cost impact on the project. And also, just the movement of the, of the trail to the north side of the road would have prevented any movement of, of any street, any curb, and, and anything. So there is an existing curb on the, on the south side of the street, and this would have completely eliminated the need to remove a perfectly good curb and, curb and also remove any blacktop and any fill that may have been in that place in order to place this new trail system. So based on the amount of money that the council could have saved, I estimated between $10,000 to $15,000. I actually did a topographic survey of the existing berm, so I know where the as-built is, and then I designed another berm on top of it with a 10-foot wide top and four-to-one back slope to estimate how many cubic yards of fill would be needed. I also calculated how much fill would be needed and also how much it would be per truck based on 17 ton per truck, which would come approximately to $6,000. Now, removing the, the curb line on the south side of Balls Drive would definitely be expensive, not the demolition of it, but the actual replacement of the curb. So that's where I am coming up with my $10,000 to $15,000, that's estimated, that could potentially be saved if this plan was approved. I understand it was not approved, and that's why I'm here proposing that, based on $10,000 to $15,000, it could have been saved, I'm proposing to have zero assessments applied to the two property owners affected on Balls Drive by the street improvement, by this trail improvement. That would be 1101 Park Lane and 1100 Linway. That's only two residents. Our proposed assessments are approximately $800 apiece, according to the mailing we received, so that would be approximately $1,600 that the city would have to cover, and then based on the, the extra $10,000 I spent on this project that was easily avoidable, I feel like this is understandably appropriate. And I'll, I respect any decision you guys make, but I just wanted to voice my opinion with that.
Okay, well, thank you for your testimony, Mr. Geier. Just to be clear, you're, you're suggesting a zero cost of assessments to your property and the other property? Is that the owner of the other property here to make that statement?
No, they're not.
Okay, because I don't know if you can speak on behalf of another person.
Okay.
I mean, you can advocate it for it, but I don't, in terms of a formal request.
I understand. I, I proposed that our property then, I guess.
Okay.
And that's where the, the written statement, you're the only one that received the written statement on the bottom there.
Yeah.
But I, I understand you're the individual that's supposed to receive it, so I am opposing to appeal the $800 assessment to our property based on the amount that the city could have saved.
Okay.
Different plan.
Great. Well, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in regards to the assessment on the 2015 Improvement Project? Anyone else on that issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Council will go to that item on the agenda, resolution to adopt assessments for the 2015 Street Improvements, and your point was noted. Council, the issue is before us, what's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn?
Mayor, I have a question real quick for staff. The road is being narrowed though, correct? From, from the park going north is being narrowed.
From Park Lane over to Linway, it's being narrowed by about six feet.
And that's where the trail is being?
Correct.
So it's affecting the berm? The trail will be next to the berm?
The, the, in the section where the berm is located, the trail would be on top of the berm to an extent. We, we would have a transition zone as it would approach Park Lane to help bring it down the side of that berm and transition it into the pedestrian ramp for Park Lane for that crossing there.
Thank you.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you. Nick, I think the last time we discussed this, this project, there was a long discussion about moving the trail to the other side of Balls Drive, and there was discussion about driveways and, and a couple of other issues with some property there. And could you explain to me, if we were to make that change on the trail to the other side, what would, what would happen to the project? Like what, where would we be and what, what other issues would we be dealing with if we were to make that change?
Well, a driving force and background to why we kept the design for the south side was to minimize the number of crossings or conflict points that pedestrians would have with vehicles. Switching to the northerly side of the road, we would have four such instances, being Balls Drive, there's a driveway for the apartment complex on the west side of Linway, there's Linway itself, and then there's a fourth driveway area for the apartment complex on the easterly side of Linway. By putting the trail in as designed, we have only two crossings, Park Lane and Linway, and that was it. So from a safety standpoint, to keep the crossings to a minimum is a plus. The other big piece of this was that we already have a sidewalk and trail connection into Consimius Park that's on the southerly side, back behind the, the Ball Field backstop there. We know there's an established, well-used school pedestrian route that's coming out from the, the neighborhood that's to the southwest there that tends to stick to that southerly side of the road, and so we're serving that need along with keeping the facility up against the public park property to the maximum extent. So those were background reasons for why we designed it the way we did.
Thank you.
Mr. Geier, can I ask you a question? You know, you brought forward up here a note at the end of your email, and I just want to make a clarification because it is important. You came and you, and you made your testimony, and you suggested that, is it, is your intention that, of course, you object to the assessment that's being proposed tonight? Would that be correct?
To my property.
To your property? You can only speak to your property. Is it, is it your intention to, to appeal the assessment at a later date?
I guess I don't understand.
You don't have to answer that right now, but I just want to get a clarification because you wrote that in this email, and I want to know if I should take that as testimony?
I, I use the word "appeal" because that's what was mentioned in the documents that I received from the city engineer. So, I don't know if "appeal" is a very good word. I'm more focused on that assessment drop and the appeal process that we have to go through. I guess I'll do that, but if I can avoid a certain appeal, I'd like to.
Okay.
I guess if my affirmative appeal was incorrect, I apologize.
I just want to make sure that we're clear, so, you know, if you have intentions to appeal or not, I just want to make that. Okay, okay. Thank you, appreciate that. Just wanted to get a clarification. Council, we still have this issue before us. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Now, Nick, I know we went back and forth with this project design, and, and we ended up with what I believe is, is a good design, and this has already been approved, so tonight we're just talking about the assessment rates. Again, I think we arrived at a fair rate. We went through the operations committee back in, I think it was December, no, probably January, I guess we came up with this rate, and, and it was a fair rate. I mean, it's, it's the rate that we used, I think it's $2 or $3 higher than it was five years ago when we did Westview Drive and Pleasant Street. I think it might have been 23-something back then, so now we're at 26-something, so not a bad increase there. So I think we're, I think we're doing well. We have a good project, we have a fair assessment rate. With that information, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Councilmember Nelson makes a motion to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Vaughn to approve the assessment rates for 2015 project. Second by Councilmember Vaughn to approve the assessment rates for 2015 project. That motion is now before the body. More discussion, Councilmember Alagi.
Thank you, Your Honor. Nick, can you respond to the question or the issue raised by the constituent regarding the additional dollars that are now necessary to handle the berm? Is that something that city staff also see? Do you have an issue with that? Do we need to see a different perspective here? What is happening on that berm?
We do see a bit of additional cost relative to the route that would have been on the northerly side. I think on the order of one to one and a half percent of the project, so not a substantial amount. And again, I would go back to, in our rationale, we felt that that was an expense that was well-qualified with the safety benefit that we continue to have by minimizing the number of crossings of street and driveway areas.
Okay, I'll follow up with a comment then, which I suppose I would have left alone if it hadn't come up again, which is the number of, minimizing the number of crossings depends on your point of view. Depends on how many people you think are going to use this trail and from where. If you travel the entire length, I agree. If we're only talking about the traffic that's going from one end to the other end every time, and I agree that there'll be people who do that, that's why we put a trail there, that will happen. But if we're talking about the people who live north of Balls Drive, we're actually potentially increasing the number, or we're having them not use a trail. We're having them, you know, just kind of wander across as they are now. I get that it's not my ward. I get that, you know, these are not my constituents that I have to worry about or answer to. I do think, as I said at the last meeting, I was a little disappointed that we normally don't find as many eloquent voices that are as well-informed as those that we've heard tonight and that we heard back then. And I wish that we could find a way to encourage that kind of feedback because we say in informal and informal situations all the time, boy, I wish that we had more people who were engaged and boy, I wish that we, people would come in here and tell us what they think and let us know how we're doing. Well, we got somebody. They're letting us know how they think we're doing. And I would encourage us to try to find as many ways to encourage that kind of feedback as we possibly can. I know everybody here, generally speaking, does a great job of that. It's unusual that we have the response that we've had to date on this issue. And I wish somebody would explain that to me because I'm, it feels weird.
Council, again, let's, let me redirect why we're here. The motion before us is the assessments of 2015, not the project. I think that when we take a look at the project overall, you know, it was vetted in operations committee, it was vetted in a public hearing, that we did have this discussion. I think there were some voices tonight that I recall on why a decision was made not to move it to the north side. I was clearly understood why that reason is. I appreciate the homework that the, Mr. Garry worked on this and, you know, he certainly had an interest in that. You know, when I also looked at it, there's, it's not unusual when we put out on other projects where we have like a trail system, we try to encourage to put that on public land. And sometimes when we do that, we also, when we do that, we take that extension a bit further to make it as safe as possible. Everyone knows that the park is on the south side. That is public land. That's why the trail is there, a trail and a park. Not a novel idea. And, but the extended, to extend it further in terms of what I believe what we discussed was, you know, to keep it safe and keep it on the south side and be consistent. And I remember totally vetting that issue. And I think that the counterargument was well-made. It was eloquent, but I think it's also a call to judgment. And there's a lot of arguments that one can make on either side of an issue that can be eloquent and, but still cause for judgment. And so I think this council has acted on that. Now what we have before us is the assessment portion of that, of that discussion. Councilmember Balsanik.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I do want to echo precisely what you said. It is great that we have constituents who will come and give us an in-depth look at the dollars and cents and the configuration of the project as well. And as chairman of the operations committee, I always get frustrated because it's only when we get to the dollars and cents that everybody seems to show up and want to state their case. It's frustrating to that extent because I wish we could get that interest going when we have the, the public open house and when we have the committee meetings of operations to, to go through these things. It's, it almost becomes an afterthought at this stage of the game. I wish we had this kind of information that you presented tonight back in January and perhaps we may have taken a different route. Nevertheless, I'm still comfortable with what we have. And granted, we are talking about the assessment tonight. We're not talking about where the, you know, where the trails are and how many crossings and so forth. But I will just say that I feel as though the configuration that we ended up with is safer with regard to especially the children going to and from school, to their residences because of what Nick had specifically pointed out, the number of driveways, the crossings and so forth, especially when you get to Linway, which is kind of thought of as a through street. It's not necessarily a neighborhood street at that particular point of its existence. Now, getting back to the assessment portion, everything is relative. And, you know, you look at your property taxes and you do want to say, I want to keep them as low as I can. I think I figured out a way here where we can. And I do appreciate, I really appreciate you saying, well, you will, you will accept what, you know, what, what we finally decide on that. Although again, you still have the right to appeal if you so choose. Once, you know, all the dust settles and the street is repaved and you are given your notice, because we come back again when? Is there another, do we have another occasion where? No, this is it. This is it. Yeah, this is it. So if you were to appeal, what is it, 30 days?
Yeah, an after.
30 days. Yeah. You have 30 days from tonight where you could still appeal this. And chances are, you could win. It's a matter, and I don't like, I don't care much for the appeal process because it's sort of like, with all due respect to the city and its ordinances, it's kind of like a dare. Here's the assessment, now we dare you to appeal, you know? And you look at the cost of your assessment and what it's going to cost you to appeal it through the court system and you're going to lose money on the deal. So, you know, there you are on that. There will be a time when you could appeal it when your property taxes actually come out. I think there, isn't there another occasion at that point or not? This is, this is still it then. You just want to be clear on all of that. So, so you have 30 days from now if you choose to do so. Legal representation, I don't know what they charge per hour these days. Brings to mind a quote from Shakespeare, but I won't repeat it because I don't want to offend our city attorney. But the, the relative term or the relative amount, what are we, 26-something? What is it, a foot?
2693.
2693. In relation to, for example, the assessment that I had to pay on my property back in 2007, the assessment came in at around $67 a foot. And the total assessment then on my property was a corner lot. Is yours a corner lot? Two, yes. So my, my total assessment was around $7,000. That, again, it's a relative term. You know, you know what you can afford, you know what you think your property taxes should be and so forth, and, you know, there you have it. And our assessments have gone, when I say all over the place, not haphazardly. The assessments are created based on costs, based on, you know, what the public is going to pay versus what these assessments are going to be. We try to keep it at about 25%. In your case, it's a lot cheaper because we're just resurfacing your street and doing some curb and rearranging sidewalks and trails. In the case of my assessment, they went way down deep. It was water, sewer, gas, you know, curb, gutter, the whole thing on that. So it was much, much higher. And why am I bringing all of this up? If it soothes, if it kind of, you know, puts some salve on the wound of saying, I'm going to have to shell out some money. It could have been worse. But nevertheless, whatever a person spends out of their pocket, I think we should be very sensitive to. And, and I thank you very much for the research that you did on this. And it is something that I truly do respect. But again, we're here to talk about the assessment rate and that's kind of where we are at this point. Myself, as chairman of the operations committee, I feel as though it is a fair assessment in the relative sense of what you are paying for on that. And I hope you can appreciate it in terms of where we're coming from as a council. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. We have a motion before the bodies or further discussion to the motion? Councilmember Alagi.
Thank you, Your Honor. It does relate to the assessment. It wasn't my intention to bring up the nature of the project. In fact, if someone here were to make a motion to remove this gentleman from this, I would more than happily second it. I don't want to offer something that might not get seconded, but I'll more than happily put that out there. But in the meantime, I do want to ask council to explain clearly, because I'm not sure I captured this here, for next steps, for anybody who would like to review the assessment or take additional steps, can you say for the public benefit in as brief and clear a way as possible, how one might go about doing that?
Counselor?
Sure. Councilmember and Mayor, anyone who wishes to object or appeal the assessment must have either filed an objection before tonight or at tonight's meeting. It can be either oral or written. I think based on what we've seen here, we would consider that a written objection. So he's preserved his rights to do that. Then within 30 days from today's hearing, if the assessment is so ordered, then within that 30 days, they must start the process by giving notice of appeal that is filed on the mayor or the clerk of the municipality of Hastings. And then within 10 days of that, they must serve, basically start the legal action in the court within that time period.
Thank you, counsel. And I don't mean to put you on the spot in terms of like what this might cost somebody, but can you clarify what you, you know, in general, generally speaking, is the barrier high to somebody creating appeal monetarily? Do we make this a system that is something that is expensive to do or not? Because I am worried after upon hearing about Councilmember Balsanik's testimony here that I, or comments, excuse me, that we may be setting up a barrier.
Councilmember, I'm not sure if I could say exactly. I would expect that the standard fees would be at least a few thousand dollars for someone to go through the process to a trial. Sometimes these things are settled before a trial actually happens. Basically, a property owner would need to meet the burden that the property isn't sufficiently benefited by the, by the assessment that's being completed. Hastings' approach is to assess a very small portion of the work that's being done and that, I think, gives the city a pretty good comfort level that the amount of work that's completed will benefit the property by at least the amount of the assessment. So it's kind of an, it may be an uphill battle to meet that special assessment test, but as to the exact cost, I couldn't say for sure.
Understood. Yeah, not asking you to cost it out or anything like that. All right. I just want to make sure that those, those parts were clear based on what we just heard. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Balsanik.
Yes, I'll just make one more comment about that. You know, we're, we're assessing a small portion of what the total cost is. There are many other cities in the metropolitan area who assess their property owners 100% of the cost of redoing the street, whatever amount it should happen to be, and the city takes on no responsibility financially. The property owner takes 100% of the assessment. Edina is one city that comes to mind in particular. And as I say, there are many others. So the citizens of Hastings are fortunate in terms of what, what the assessments are on that. Thank you.
Okay, we're back to the main motion. Main motion to adopt the assessment for 2015. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion prevails. Okay. Next, we go to award the contract for the 2015 street improvements. Nick?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Hicks. City received two bids for this project a couple of weeks ago, not quite. The low bid being from Pemper Companies, $488,127, with McNamara Contracting as a close second at about $496,000. So it was nice to see that tight spacing of bids. Of course, we had hoped for more interest than that, but I think all things considered, we'll take it. The estimate for the project for the construction component was a little over $600,000. So we are getting a good price. Pemper Companies has worked in town several times doing projects of this nature. We did take them through a thorough review after their bid was submitted and everything was found to be on the up and up. So our recommendation is to approve and award of the contract to Pemper Companies for $488,127.
Okay. That's about what, $120,000 less or so, roughly, than anticipated? That, this issue is now before us, council. What's your wish? Councilmember Vaughn makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Nelson.
Nick, you have the score there of 14, where the minimum score was 10.
Correct.
In light of some of the stuff that we've been through, could you, is that, is the 10 the minimum score? Is that like a below-average score and then a 14 would be above average? I mean, do you clarify it that way?
10 is the minimum threshold, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you.
So we have to have them score at least 10 points under this type of process.
So then at 14, they're well-qualified in order to do a project like this?
I think 14 is in the upper echelon of what we've seen when we ran this sort of process in the past. Can't remember any that have been higher than that, frankly.
That's fine. Perfect. Thank you, Nick, for that.
Mm-hmm. Motions before the body, councils, or further discussion to the motion? Councilmember Alagi?
Thank you, Your Honor. So, and I noticed the red, and there's an explanation of what the red cells are for. There was a mathematical error apparently in there. You are, you've already computed that in the final bid so that we are looking at the actual computed.
You're looking at the actual number, Councilmember Alagi.
I figured that was the case, but since it's on there.
Correct. It was a matter of a few hundred dollars, nothing that tipped the scales from one to the other.
Appreciate the precision. Thank you for that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Any further discussion, council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to accept Pemper's bid, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we deal with the Riverfront Renaissance Phase One update. We have a cost projection update that Nick's going to give us, and Nick will, will take that update now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. No action item on this in particular. You'll have a variety of those to consider after I talk about this, but I dropped on each of your spots in the dais, a summary spreadsheet that indicates, kind of contrasting where we thought we would be if we continued the contract under RSI Associates versus what we've learned in the last month in terms of shopping around for some pricing on various items that we would need to purchase to complete the project scope, talking with contractors about proposed costs that they would have to come in and do various other components. And so I've got that side by side here. And I'll note that I get down towards the end here and I've indicated that one of the things that we're proposing to do is to push the street, concrete and sidewalk repair component of the project off to phase three. And that was a fairly decent change in the overall scope, I guess you might say, from a dollars and cents standpoint. However, looking back at it again, we think we were pretty conservative on the front end with estimating the amount of work that needed to be done on both Tyler and Ramsey Streets north of Second. They're fairly new. They do have some cracks here and there. They do have some cracks here and there, but we do think that figure's kind of high. So I guess what I'm getting at is that by pushing it into phase three, I don't see us having a figure arriving at that sort of level when it's wrapped up in a bigger project like phase three will be, particularly with a lot larger component of concrete, street repair items on that. So that aims to be a fairly big difference maker in this snapshot look at everything. The other point I want to make is that this is not all inclusive. We've got a lot of work yet to do physically out there to bring everything to fruition. There are costs from a staff standpoint, from a legal standpoint that we've incurred to date, some efforts that Bolton and Banks had in helping us sort through all this and work with other contractors to get pricing for items and so forth. Staff's put in substantial effort over the last month invested in this. So those are some of the things that will take a little longer to play out, and we will keep you updated as we go and get into the nuts and bolts of physically building things out there. But to boil it all down, I think what we want to convey is that at first blush, when we had the bomb dropped on us a month and a half, two months ago, it may have looked very dire for us and perhaps not so much at this moment in time. So I'll leave you with that comment on that item. From there, well, I can take questions, and then we can perhaps move into the rest of the action items.
Is there any questions in regards to the cost project update? Councilmember Bolsonic?
Thank you, Mayor. Will the Veterans Memorial be done in time for Memorial Weekend?
At this point, we still think that is a realistic thing, Councilmember Bolsonic. We're going to have to push real hard. I don't think that folks will see a heck of a lot of activity out there for a couple more weeks yet as we get materials on the site and do some site preparation work with our own forces and then begin in later part of April. So it'll be a mad dash for the several weeks between late April and May 22nd, I think, was our initial deadline, but we feel we can get it done, yes.
Okay. I'm asking because, as you know, I'm commander of the American Legion here in Hastings, and I keep in touch with Don Latch, who's the VFW commander, and between our two service organizations, we organize and take care of the Memorial Day services. I think it's going to be wise for us to keep the main ceremony at roadside park again this year. We have been in discussions about perhaps moving that ceremony down to the Veterans Memorial when it's completed next year. We'll just see. I should also mention that we've been in touch with the city, VFW and the Legion regarding the designation of various wars that the United States has been involved in. And what we are addressing in terms of listing those engagements are wars in which Hastings' residents participated. So they will remain virtually the same, I believe, with the exception of the Afghanistan War, which has no end date on it because it is still ongoing. There were questions that had been asked about the Mexican Revolutionary War, which was 1916 to 1917, and that was the war in which Patton, Pershing, Eisenhower, a few other well-known American generals fought, and that was their first war. And there was a request that that war be included with the plaques. But the city has decided that we only want to list those wars in which, again, Hastings' residents participated in. I have asked the Pioneer Room, Cindy Smith is the curator there. I asked her to research and see if there were any indications that there were Hastings' residents involved in that war, and she did write back to me. I don't know if she copied you. She did?
Yep.
Okay. Saying that, to the best of her knowledge, through research, there were no Hastings residents who participated in the Mexican War. So that will not be on there. And again, the bottom line is those wars that are listed had Hastings residents participating in them. Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go to approve settlement. The first action that's required of us tonight under the Riverfront Renaissance updates here is to approve settlements and approve payment with Phase One subcontractors with Innovative Concrete and Ryan Electric.
I'm going to turn that over to City Attorney Fleagle to explain the background.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The council's asked to approve the two settlement agreements that are included in the packet, as the mayor indicated, one with Ryan Electric, the other one with Innovative Concrete. These are the two largest subcontractors that contributed to the Phase One work. Basically, this started when the bonds for the RSI general contractor were found to be invalid. Nick and I then went to the subcontractors after they filed claims to see if they would be willing to negotiate somewhat on their claims. Ryan Electric has come down by about $2,000, plus they've waived some additional potential change order items, about $1,500 total. Innovative Concrete has come down by waiving about $2,800 of their interest and attorney fees that were part of their claim that they made. So these were tough negotiations. The statute puts the burden for paying the subcontractors pretty much solely on the city if the bonds are not obtained, but I think both of these subcontractors did contribute a little bit to getting this resolved. So based on all of that, I'm recommending that you approve the settlement agreement with these two contractors. The city would then proceed with working with the small remaining three or four contractors that have total claims of $8,900. We expect that those would be paid virtually at 100 percent of the claim amounts unless we can negotiate something further with them.
Okay, thank you, Dan. On this point, to approve settlements and approve payment with Phase One subcontractors. Councilmember Schultz?
I will make a motion to, for us to make that payment on the subcontractors.
Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Bolsonic. That motion is now before the body. Discussion to that motion. Councilmember Vaughn.
Just a quick question first. Are we, are they completed with their work, or do we, will they still have some more work this spring?
Sure. Councilmember and council, the Innovative Concrete work is completed as to what they were going to complete. Ryan Contract had a small amount of light fixture installation that has not been completed. You'll see one of the later items references about a $3,000 quote for completing that work, so that is the only amount of their uncompleted work. That's not part of this action, but we'll, about several items down in the accept quote unauthorized work completion of Veterans Lighting, Ryan Electric.
Councilmember Alangi?
Thank you, Your Honor. Am I to take it then that the city, it's sort of presumed in all of this, but the city has stepped in as the contractor? Would that be an accurate statement? So the city is coming in to fix this and will take the place of the contractor and ensure that this gets finished? I just want to make sure that we're clear on that and that we're being public about it. I mean, every once in a while, the public sector has to come in and take care of that private sector inefficiency.
Pick up the mess.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we were on top of it. There are many wonderful vendors, including our current subcontractors, who gave a lot here. Really appreciate what they were able to put into the table. Hope they realize that doing business in Hastings is good for them and safe deal and something that we're very interested in seeing happen in the future as well. Thanks, Your Honor.
Okay, is there further discussion on this point? Councilmember Schultz?
I will echo Councilmember Alangi's statements. I also want to say thank you to the staff because I, last night about 9:30, I posed a couple of questions about certain things, and Nick came up with this, which I think was very helpful to kind of see what some of the bottom line was. I know you guys are really busy, but thank you for making sure that we could kind of see where we were headed with all this. I know it's been a lot of hard work.
Okay. To the motion before us, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next is to accept quote and award contract for Riverfront Renaissance Phase One landscaping and streetscaping work. Nick?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Councilmembers, the work entailed in this quote was pretty much just the plantings and landscaping component of the project, that being some boulevard plantings that we had intended to do on Ramsey Street and Tyler Street and also in the new Depot Park area to complement the other features that we're putting in there. We had requested pricing from Hoffman and McNamara, who was slated to be the subcontractor for RSI, and we came to learn that they had essentially procured most of the plants that would be needed. So they were a bit ahead of the curve in being ready to do the work here. We also compared that to some pricing that we requested from Sheehy, who's going to be the Phase Two contractor, and essentially, they were at the same number for that work. So in light of the fact that Hoffman and McNamara had some intentions to do the work in the first place, provided a competitive quote, and has the plantings on hand, we're recommending to award that work to them. And they will work in concert with Sheehy to bring things together with the other components that Sheehy will be doing, which I'll talk about in a minute.
Okay. To the point about accepting the quote and award contract to Hoffman and McNamara, landscaping and streetscaping. Council, what's your wish? Councilmember Brox makes a motion to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Nelson. That motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next is to approve change order number one for Riverfront Renaissance Phase Two, Sheehy Construction. Nick?
Thank you. As I just mentioned, we did get some pricing from Sheehy Construction, our Phase Two contractor, for completing additional concrete work that was within the Phase One scope, things that had not been started yet by anyone with the Phase One contract structure. So this is primarily Depot Park. There's a number of concrete items there. They also would perform some removal items related to the landscaping that would happen on the boulevards in Ramsey and Tyler Streets. And there's some site work and grading on the Depot Park site and some touch-up type things that they would be asked to do down in the Levy Park area as part of this work scope. So we had priced that against various other contractors during the process of looking into this. You'll see in my memo that we did have, in totality there, the same work, if we would have continued under RSI, would have been a little bit less, or a little bit more, in fact, than what we arrived at with Sheehy. So this was a good result for us here. So we're requesting approval of a change order to add this to Sheehy's contract scope. Any change orders that are in excess of $25,000, we need to process through the city council and at the start. In other words, they're not administratively approvable, so putting it back to the council to consider.
Thank you, Nick. To the point to approve change order number one. Councilmember Alangi?
Thank you, Your Honor. This one did confuse me. I just need a little bit more explanation before we get to get too far down the road here. So I also enjoyed the spreadsheet about Phase One and thought it was very useful, and thank you for that. And then I read this, and I saw that it looks to me like there are some costs that weren't in, or that were in Phase One, are no longer possible to do under Phase One because of what happened with RSI and that we are shifting to Phase Two. Which, I mean, the concept here is fine. I mean, we're going to get the work done, want to be supportive of that, the general concept. But what was confusing me is that I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing the crosswalk that gets me from Phase One. Where from Phase One, in the originally expected cost via contract with WSI column, where did these $59,000 or $60,000, where the costs come from?
Yeah, I do have them listed on the second page of the memo there. There's a listing of bid items. I'm sorry if maybe that didn't make it on the printed version there.
New item? The ones that are listed, new item, correct?
There's new items. There is also, the way that we track these items was through the numbering process that we have for Phase Two. So there are items that they already intended to do that essentially we're increasing the quantities. And then there are other new work scope items for Sheehy.
You don't need to apologize. It's clear. What I'm, that part is clear. And I see the total add up to 60,000. What I'm not clear is when we were looking at Phase One and we're saying, okay, so it looks like Phase One, we're still coming in at about 3,000 less because we're moving some stuff to Phase Three. So I see $37,500 moving to Phase Three. I see a couple of other things that total about 14,000, 15,000 that are being reduced either through cost savings or, you know, smart staff, conservative estimates, that sort of thing. Typical awesome work, and thank you for that. What I'm, the question I guess I'm asking, trying to say it as clearly as possible, which is, was this work ever in Phase One?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it was. And the original spreadsheet does account for this, if that helps. These are, the change order costs are plugged into this overall summary worksheet.
So you are saying that, so, Your Honor, for the sake of clarification, that $418,349.50, the original expected cost, includes 60,000, rounding here, the 60,000. And that, so we looked at that, and we said that, okay, that's fine, that's how we're going to make things balance here. Then on top of that, we're actually moving 60,000 then from this? $418,000, so we're really doing about 350,000, 360,000 in Phase One? Do I have it right? I guess I'm just confused because I don't get why we're suddenly moving 60,000 work if we already had the 418 accounted for.
Yeah. I'll take a shot at it.
Please, thank you.
The $60,000 in change order work through Sheehy is built in to all of the figures on the summary spreadsheet. We're not moving it out of Phase One. It's still assigned, and it'll be an assigned cost to Phase One when all is said and done. It's, it just so happens the Phase Two contractor is the one going to do the work.
Your Honor, I still, I'm, I apologize, Nick. I know you're trying hard, and it's probably, it's probably all with me. So somebody else up here, I'm going to stop in a moment, and then somebody else up here can pick it up. Up here, it says, in the first paragraph, it says, "This was done in Phase One project, but it was defaulted on by the Caesar's contractor." That's what has me on this track. So it looks to me, and there's nothing wrong with this, nobody in the city's done anything wrong. I want to make sure I'm not complaining or anything like that, or thinking there's anything untoward here. But I don't get, I don't get what's happening. So I don't know what you're asking me to approve. You're asking me to take, work, because the work was supposed to be done in Phase One, but now we're saying we want it to be done in Phase Two, but I'm still seeing the same price tag on Phase One. So I would expect to see a core funding decrease in Phase One. Otherwise, we're paying for it in both Phase One and Phase Two. I understand that's wrong. I see people shaking their heads. So somebody's got to explain to me a way I understand it, or I can't go along.
Come on, Tony.
Your Honor, Your Honor and council, let me take a shot at it. The 60,000 is included in Phase One. The contractor, similar to Hoffman and McNamara that you just acted upon, is Sheehy. Sheehy is our Phase Two contractor, but they're going to be conducting work that's included into Phase One. So we're awarding a contract to Sheehy to perform work which is included within this $415,000.
Okay, I'm getting there. So where in this column is this work being done? Because I see it itemized here. So where, where in here, is it in the 175? Is it in the 59, 231? Is it in the 116? Or is it across all those categories?
All the above.
Yeah, it's all the above.
It's mixed, it's mixed in because it's components of Phase One for which Sheehy has the technical and the ability to complete. And so we are awarding the contract to them to complete those portions of it. Similar to the landscaping portion, which is accounted for in this spreadsheet, we just approved that contract to Hoffman and McNamara. That number is included in here. We're just awarding it to a different contractor.
I think I understand. I thank Your Honor and council for their, and staff for their indulgence.
Thank you.
Okay, we are back to the, we do have a motion? Okay. I'll seek a motion to accept the, to approve the change order number one. Councilmember Nelson makes a motion to accept, seconded by Councilmember Brox. This motion is to approve change order number one. Is there further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Now we go to the point of Now, we go to the point of accept quote and authorized work for the masonry column construction. Nick?
Yes, this'll be to get the military insignia columns completed down at the Veterans Memorial. We did solicit quotes from three different contractors on this, there's a bit of a broad range on that. Asked two external masonry companies, as well as for a price from ICI, the former concrete subcontractor who had some interest in doing it. We did get a little bit lower figure from them, although that was not inclusive of some finishing touches, if you will, mounting the medallion insignias on the column, and doing some finishing work. So, what our recommendation is here is to award this work to Hollenbeck and Nelson out of Coon Rapids. That is a pretty critical item to the Veterans Memorial, to make that complete and round it off there. So, would anticipate starting that work at the end of April here, once the stone materials arrive.
Counsel, to that point. Councilmember Logi makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Vaughn. That motion is now before the body, is there further discussion? Councilmember Nelson.
Irregardless of what I just asked the city attorney here, I'd like to make the declaration that the last name Nelson there is a fairly common name, and it has no association with my family or myself. I'm not part of, you know, it's not, it's not former Councilmember Barb Hollenbeck and I doing concrete masonry.
Not gonna be going out there with your trowel.
No, sir. So, I just wanna make that clarification, Nelson is a common name. It is not Councilmember Nelson as part of this company, so, thank you, Your Honor.
What's your middle name?
So, we have that clarification, and we have a motion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion prevails. And then, next, we have to accept quote to authorize work on the completion of the Veterans Memorial lighting. Nick?
Yes, this was alluded to a few minutes ago by City Attorney Fleagle, that in part of the settlement agreement with Ryan Electric, we did agree with them that they could finish off the task that they were asked to do there, and that is complete the light fixture installations. They have most of that work already done. It's essentially inserting the guts, if you will, of the uplighting that will be down there to highlight the flags and the memorial columns. So, $3,000 for that, they have the parts in hand, so that one could start at any moment, once we get authorization to go forward with it.
Counsel, to that item? Councilmember Balsany makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Logi. Discussion to that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. And then, authorized staff to purchase materials and furnishings. Nick?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Lastly, we've got a number of various components that are things that we can purchase directly, either to supply to a contractor to complete a specific task, I alluded to the stone a little bit ago, and there are other things that are furniture items, or trash cans, or the bike repair station and bike pump that will go at Depot Park as part of the little weigh station there for travelers of the MRT trail system as they come through town. So, I've listed out what each of those are, who we feel at this moment in time would complete the work, and whether there was a price for the installation end of it, or whether city staff could accomplish that, and the overall cost comparison with what we would've expected to pay RSI. I did get a little bit of an update on the playground end of things today, and that bottom-line picture's looking a bit better than what our scenario was when the council memo went out, such that we may be able to spend $7,500 or so less than we would have. I don't wanna characterize it as savings yet, because we're not at the end, so, spending less. So, staff's asking for approval to go forward and make all of the purchases that we need to, to keep the train moving here with getting those things put into place.
Okay. To that point, Counsel, what's your wish? Councilmember Balsany makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Nelson. That motion is now before the body, any further discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Before we leave this subject, I wanna thank you, Nick, Melanie, Dan, all the staff, and those who were involved in this, from the Public Works Department and Parks Department, pulling our resources together. We were put in a very difficult situation, nothing of our doing, and to be able to take this RSI situation, and to make the changes that we had to do to keep the project, which is vitally important to the citizens of our community online, is very comforting to know that we have such dedicated staff that can put this together in such short order. And I just tell you, I just want to tell you how appreciative I am, and I know my colleagues on the council are, for all the hard work. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, four was withdrawn from the agenda. We are Community Development, Order Public Hearing, Business Subsidy, Art Space, Block One. John, we finally got you, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. I'm just gonna put a map up here in just a moment to highlight the property in which we're looking at tonight. The action tonight is just to order the public hearing for a business subsidy. I'll go through some of the details of that in just a moment here. But as the council is aware, we've been negotiating over the last six weeks or so with Art Space on a project for downtown Hastings. Art Space provides live-work units, they build them, they manage these properties. What we're looking at in particular is this property here on what's commonly known as Block One, in the red square. It's approximately one acre in size, and this would meet the needs for their construction of about 37 live-work units, along with some commercial space within it. So, that's the property which we're looking at. I know you're aware that we've had a few meetings between the Finance Committee, Hedra, and council related to different aspects of this project. The aspect that we're looking at tonight is to order a public hearing for a business subsidy. Under state statutes, any time that the city goes through a project in which there is a subsidy greater than $150,000, a public hearing must be held, a business subsidy agreement must be drafted. The case that we're looking at here would result in that. In discussions we've had with the Finance Committee of City Council, the request has been made by Art Space to purchase that property for $1. The assessed value, or the appraised, the assessed value of that property per acre presently is about $316,000. So, essentially, what we're looking at would be a business subsidy in excess of $300,000 for that property. The public hearing that we would hold for that would come up in a couple of weeks here, we'd hold that on April 20th. That would also be followed by a business subsidy agreement. Within the package itself, I laid out some information relating to some of the criteria that we have for business subsidies, through our own business subsidies that we've adopted through Hedra, and how this property would meet that. I've also put in there the request letter that we did receive from Art Space detailing their reasons as to why the purchase of that property for full market value would not be, would not be able to be done with this site. With the property itself, what Art Space proposes to do is to add about $12 to $13 million with the market value to that property, generating about $50 to $70,000 worth of taxable value per year. I know you're aware that the property has been under our ownership for a long period of time, over 20 years. There's been a couple of different attempts to develop that property that have been unsuccessful. To characterize some of the Finance Committee discussion that we've had up to this point is, we're ready to have something occur on that property. And in the past, we've been looking to receive something closer to market value on it. The situation is here, the addition of residential units in the downtown area, the track record that Art Space has in managing and keeping within their properties, and the opportunity for this to be an impetus for other projects in the area, I think led to the recommendation of the Finance Committee to go forward with the request at $1 for the property. In addition to this, we will be taking this forward to Hedra coming up on Thursday to get their opinion on it as well. So, tonight, the action is to order the public hearing for the April 20th meeting for the business subsidy, and I can stand for any questions if you have them. Thank you.
And Counsel, this issue is before us, to make a motion to order the public hearing. Councilmember Schultz makes a motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Brooks. This motion is now before the body. Is there any further discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. The motion prevails. Next, we have comments from the audience. Are there any comments from the audience tonight? If there's anyone here who'd like to speak to the council, now's the time. Okay, come on up to the podium. First of all, we wanna welcome you to the meeting, and thank you for being here. Could you please give us your name and address for the record?
I'm Lisa Van Horn, and this is Jennifer Malesio, my partner. We are co- we are co-owners of Bella Vista Restaurant on 101 Second Avenue.
Second Street.
Sorry, Second Street, Hastings, Minnesota, 55033. And basically, the reason that we are here today is because we are currently in the process of trying to purchase or lease a parcel of land adjacent to our establishment, our restaurant, utilizing that for patio space, outdoor patio space this summer. And we're currently waiting on some, I won't say red tape, but we're going back and forth between Mindot and the City of Hastings, just trying to get the okay and move ahead with this process. But during this time, we were informed that it would be okay for us to purchase tables and establish those tables on the side of the business, where we are eventually hoping to have a patio area. It is not a freeway area, it is a walkway, an un-motorized area. I don't know how familiar, I'm sure you are very familiar with the area, but the area that we're, that we're intended.
So, plantings right there, right next to the trail?
Yes.
Daylilies are right there alongside the building, you have the sidewalk, and then some daylilies, and then the trail.
Correct.
We'll give those daylilies to them if they want 'em back.
Yes.
So, you don't have to buy more. No, I'm just kidding.
That's that strip there you're talking about.
Correct, right. But what we were hoping to do while we wait for all this is to have sidewalk cafe, or sidewalk tables, and I went to Adeline to ask her about it, and I've also gone to Tasha and Wendy, a couple of the other restaurants downtown, and they said they keep getting shot down, that you can't have tables outside due to you can't contain it. And I've worked in San Antonio, and where you can't contain it, and people are allowed, are not allowed to walk on the Riverwalk. As the owner or server of the restaurant, it's your responsibility to contain your alcohol. If we wanna bring people down to our restaurant, or our downtown, any restaurant, we have to venture out and be like the big towns. You know, we're not the first town to want to have alcohol on the streets, or on our sidewalks, I should say. We're probably one of the last that I know of. I mean, we both come from St. Paul, and like I said, I come from San Antonio, and I don't see, or we don't see where this is such a big problem. Or maybe it is, because we're new to downtown, and we don't know, you know, the whole gist of it all.
It is a sticky wicket, I can tell you that. It's based on liabilities concerned, they're public walkways, they're not private property.
Right.
It's not private property. Actions there can therefore be liability issues to the city. So, we have, there's problematic, I'm not saying that there cannot be discussions to see what we can do to address some of these issues, but it is not as simple.
Right.
As it sounds. And I don't think there's anybody who likes to have a beer outside more than me. But it's not a question of just, oh, here's a nice little open area, let's open it up and do it, and, you know, there must be a city ordinance we can change.
Right, right, right.
It's much bigger than that. I know I've had some discussions with some of the business owners that you described, we're looking into that, we're gonna see how we can make it work, we wanna make it work. But, public safety and the city's interests in being protected from any action is paramount.
Right.
And so, any actions that we would take would have to be reflective of those interests being to my satisfaction, to my colleagues' satisfaction, that, you know, any arrangements that can be made can meet those requirements that the legalese and the liability issues would be taken care of. Dan, maybe you can give me an update, I know we had an inquiry last week.
Yes, Mayor, and City Council, the mayor did ask, as part of another Second Street business that we look into it, because there had been the request from Bella Vista that I was aware of, I did suggest that City Administrator Melanie Mescoli, myself, Nick Egger, Police Chief Brian Schaefer is not available, but we did schedule a meeting this week to talk about it, to discuss what would need to happen, what are the drawbacks and the pluses that are there, and then to try to come back with a more complete report back to the City Council on what is possible, and I guess what the risks are too. So, that is in the process, Mayor.
Thank you, and I know it's gonna take a little bit of time, so, if you can bear with it, but we have to make sure the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted, and that everyone's interests are served.
Right, right, okay.
Councilmember Logi?
Thank you, Your Honor. I know there's, you mentioned the issue of public safety, and I know there's a public safety committee happening this Wednesday morning at seven-ish, and I wanted to offer up, I don't know when the group is meeting, if they're meeting tomorrow by any chance, is that, is that too soon to, because I was gonna, I was gonna offer up a committee meeting, if you needed council members, just kinda get a committee meeting going and just move things along. I don't know what other, and also can offer up planning committee as an opportunity to kinda take a look at this, because I know that speed, we want accuracy, and we also want speed.
Right. And the speed is duly noted, but research needs to be done, and we need to do our due diligence and research, and that's gonna take a little bit more time.
Right. So, is there a committee that you, once this is done, that you would like to look at it? For the, I mean, we could schedule that now, couldn't we?
Yes.
When's the meeting?
Okay, Thursday?
You know, we could have, I tell you what, who's the chair of the Public Safety Committee?
I am your.
You are? Why don't we have, you know, why don't we have staff after Thursday get ahold of you, council member, and we'll go from there and schedule a possible public safety meeting after that point, and have that discussion after staff has a chance to research the issues, and you can talk about public safety.
Are you sure it's public safety?
Well, you know, you know, there'd be an enforcement provision in this, and so I think it'd be okay to be in public safety.
Okay.
Your Honor and Counsel, it could probably land in either of them safely. There's, there's public safety issues, there's licensing, there's, you know, I think public safety is fine, if we can pull that committee meeting together sooner, we'll do it that way.
We'll move it quickly, and we'll invite all council members, no matter what committee they serve on, to join us, and handle it with you.
You've got issues with the committee?
Well, we'll get as many as we can, if we gotta move, we gotta move, we gotta move. We gotta, you know.
Okay, so is that, is that, are we everyone clear, so maybe you got your answers to the question where we are?
Yep.
You know, we have not stood still on it.
Right, I got it.
As you can tell, we're involved in it, and I'm sure we'll be meeting shortly again.
Wonderful.
Okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming, and appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for the council? Okay, council announcements? Councilmember Schultz?
As Councilmember Logi alluded to, there will be a headroom meeting on Thursday night. Sorry, I have to look at the date here, April 9th, at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Logi?
Yes, and as I alluded, there will be a Wednesday morning meeting of the Public Safety Committee, the purpose of which is just to go over, just an update meeting to go over some progress we have with our fire and rescue department.
Okay, and that's Wednesday at 7:00 AM?
Yep, here, not in chambers, but here in the building.
Okay. Is there any further announcements? If not, I have a few announcements. First of all, Monday, a week from tonight, April 13th, at 7:00 PM, the Planning Commission will be meeting here at City Hall. On Tuesday, April 14th, the Park and Rec Commission, Park and Recreation Commission will be meeting at the joint facility, maintenance facility at 920 West 10th Street at 6:00 PM. On Thursday, April 16th, at 6:00 PM, the Public Safety Advisory Commission will be having their meeting, and that'll be taking place at the Police Department. On Monday, April 20th, at 7:00 PM, that'll be our next City Council meeting. Saturday, April 25th, to let everyone know, it's a great day, many around the community will be engaged in cleanup, cleanup of our parks, and also Household Hazardous Waste Drop-Off Day, very popular in our community. That'll be from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on April 25th, Saturday, April 25th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, at the Cal Rudy Public Works Facility at 1225 Progress Drive. This is a free disposal of electronics, household hazardous waste, confidential documents shredding, and other household items will be accepted for a small fee. Information is available on the Hastings City website. And then, Counsel, I want to remind you that on that same day, on April 25th, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, the City Council will be conducting a strategic planning retreat on that day. Councilmember Schultz?
I have a question. When we have our planning retreat, if there's an update on the issue with patio sidewalk seating, maybe we can have a discussion there too about, you know, if, I don't know if public safety can meet between Wednesday and then, you know, okay. Just, just thought I'd add that to Melanie's long list of things that we wanna chat about.
To-do list?
Yeah.